Welcome, everyone, to the September 17th City Council Work Session. The first item up today is the Work Session on the Metro Plan Enabling Amendments. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Carolyn and her team.
Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Burke with the Planning and Development Department, and I'm here today with Emily Jerome of the Local Government Law Group, who is the author of the amendments that we're talking about today. And she -- I will be giving you a presentation, but Emily is here for questions should they come up.
Is your -- is it working?
I think so. I'll just get closer.
Yep.
It does seem that our PowerPoint projector is not working today. So, a few technical difficulties. We do have handouts.
Overheads.
Yes. Can hand them. So, we're going to start with this first presentation, the blue one, and I will just kind of walk you through that and let you know what slide we're on as we go. So, we're here to talk about a package of proposed amendments to the Metro Plan. And in order -- and at the end of the Work Session, we'll be asking you to actually initiate these amendments for your future process and consideration. We'll walk you through a little bit of history and context around the Metro Plan, what the proposed amendments entail, and a little bit about next steps. So, you can flip to page two at the top of the page. The Metro Plan is the basic guiding land use policy document for the entire metropolitan area, and it provides broad policy direction and a blueprint for how we want to develop this metro area in the future. All jurisdictions in Oregon are required to have a comprehensive land use plan. The Metro Plan serves that function for Eugene and Springfield. That comprehensive land use plan is required to address land allocations and policies related to housing, employment, parks, schools, transportation, and public facilities. On a practical day-to-day basis, we use it as a broad policy document to guide local decision-making around zoning and code requirements. So, at the bottom of page two, "The Metro Plan currently works under the assumption that Eugene and Springfield share an urban growth boundary, and they also share a land supply and policies related to housing and employment." The text throughout the Metro Plan document, the diagram, the policies, all assume one common metropolitan urban growth boundary and one common set of policies. Then, in 2007, the Oregon State Legislature passed House Bill 3337, which requires Eugene and Springfield to adopt separate urban growth boundaries and separate land use policies. So, to comply with that law with HB 3337, the Metro Plan must be revised to enable each of the cities, Eugene and Springfield, to adopt their own UGBs and their own policies. So, next page, page three at the top. "Last year, you and the elected officials of Springfield and Lane County made amendments to Chapter Four of the Metro Plan." You might recall that. That was really focused around the procedures for how to amend the Metro Plan in the future. Specifically amendments, those amendments establish new rules for determining which of the three governing bodies are required to participate in various types of amendments to the Metro Plan. The amendments that we're discussing today are, in essence, a continuation of those Chapter Four amendments. They address all the other chapters that are in the Metro Plan, and they are also a result of HB 3337. Also, last year, the Joint Elected Officials made amendments to the Metro Plan boundary on the Springfield side of I-5. You may recall, we amended that Metro Plan boundary to be coterminous with Springfield's urban growth boundary. And we do anticipate the county will ask the same of Eugene at some point in the future, but I just wanted to be clear, that's not what we're talking about today. Those are very different from what we're talking about here. So, moving on to what the proposed amendments do entail, if you flip to the top of page four, there are three categories of revisions to the proposed amendments. The first is to ensure that each city can, independently of each other, establish our own urban growth boundary and our own plans. So, if you look at the next slide at the bottom of page four, you know that Eugene is working towards establishing its own Eugene-specific comprehensive plan as a result of Envision Eugene. We will be presenting Phase One of that comprehensive plan to you when we come to you with the Envision Eugene adoption package, and that will include -- that Phase One includes everything that is required for us to establish our new urban growth boundary, so including our new housing policies and our employment policies. And what we will be doing, in essence, again, if you look at that slide on the bottom of page four, is kind of migrating some of those policies, especially around housing and employment, from the Metro Plan into our own specific comprehensive plan. However, some of the policies in the Metro Plan will need to remain there because it's a long process to establish our own comprehensive plan. So, we'll be in this interim time period where we're relying on really both documents, our own comprehensive plan and the Metro Plan. And so, we -- that is the process that we're kind of enabling us to happen right now. Then, if you look at the top of page five, we also want to make clarifications in the Metro Plan about the current status of our urban growth boundary and the future status. And so, if you look closely, you can see there's a blue line that goes all the way around Eugene, and it encompasses Springfield. That is Eugene's current urban growth boundary. Springfield's urban growth boundary is the red dotted line. So, they have already established a line down I-5, and that is Springfield's urban growth boundary. We're making changes to the plan diagram to call the blue line the metropolitan urban growth boundary. The red line will be called the Springfield urban growth boundary, and in the future, when Eugene establishes its own urban growth boundary, we will call it the Eugene urban growth boundary, and the metropolitan urban growth boundary will go away. So, we have to enable us to allow that to happen. The second type of amendments we're making to the Metro Plan is really explanatory text of everything that I just told you, and so that future planners and people that are reading the Metro Plan understand that we are in this interim phase, and this is where we're going, and this is how we should be using the plan at this time. So, it's really clarifying the context. And then, the third revision, we're at the top of page six, are changes to remove text that is obsolete and can no longer be applied due to a change in the law. And so, a perfect example of this is deleting text related to the now-defunct Lane County Boundary Commission. That commission has not been in effect as a result of changes in state law for several years now, but we still have references to it in the Metro Plan. So, we took this opportunity to clean up those obvious obsolete passages. So, moving on to the future and the top of page seven, although House Bill 3337 does require us to split, we know that we will be doing regional planning into the future. And in fact, we are required to do regional planning, particularly when it comes to transportation and public facilities. And we also know that in many aspects, it's mutually beneficial to do -- to plan at a regional level, and particularly around topics such as economic prosperity, parks and open space, hazard mitigation, and some of our lobbying efforts for federal resources. We already do those in a regional context, and we anticipate continuing to do that. An example of some of that regional planning is with the $1.4 million Sustainable Cities grant that we received from HUD, Housing and Urban Development Department. That grant supported the Lane Livability Consortium and all sorts of regional planning activities to help us further our goals around economic prosperity, housing, transportation, and sustainability. And that same funding source actually allowed us to hire Emily of the Local Government Law Group to craft these enabling amendments to the Metro Plan. And obviously, with Emily's long history with the Metro Plan, it made her the perfect choice to author these amendments and kind of bring us into the next phase of metro planning. So, next steps, the last slide. Today, we're just asking for you to initiate a process to consider these code amendments. Once initiated, we will plan a joint public hearing with the planning commissions of Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County. They will make a recommendation to you, and then we'll have a Joint Elected Officials' public hearing, and then you'll deliberate on your own about whether or not to adopt these amendments. So, with that, both Emily and I are available for questions.
Questions? Mike, you want to ask a question?
Well, I do. I understand the intent for compliance with that split. There are also other -- I don't want to hesitate to use the word housekeeping because it's been used before, but I think from my understanding of things, there are another -- there are some cleanup things that could be done around this. Is that -- because this is such a long and involved process, is that wise for us to do at this time? I mean, there've been some, I don't want to call them controversies, but some discussions in the last, you know, half a year or so about contradictions in the Metro Plan versus some particular refinement plans, and I wonder if it's appropriate to try and address any of those with this process.
Really, with this process, we're trying to make these non-substantive. Really, these are not policy changes. These are about enabling us to make policy changes in the future for each jurisdiction independently of one another. But first, what we need to do is kind of lay the groundwork and the foundation so that we can establish our own policies. So, we've intentionally kind of stayed out of the policy realm and made them as non-substantive as possible.
Okay. Thanks.
Any others?
I move to initiate a process to make enabling amendments to the Metro Plan.
Second.
Motion seconded. Further discussion, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. If none in opposition, it passes. Thank you.
Good job.
She's a love hound.
How the wood begins.
You know, when it makes sense, we can get there.
I wouldn't say that. I would never say that.
That's the hope.
Okay. Second work session.
Let's not jinx it, right?
This is Central Lane Scenario Planning Update.
Thanks, Mayor. Go ahead.
Yes. So, hello, I'm back. And this time, I'm with Kristin Hall of CH2M Hill, who is the project manager for the Scenario Planning Project. I sit on a multi-jurisdictional staff team that is kind of shepherding this project through, and Kristin will be giving you a PowerPoint presentation on paper to update you on where we are in the process. We last reported back in March, which was about six months ago. We've made quite a bit of progress on the project since then, and we're really eager to get your feedback on what we've accomplished. And so, you know Springfield, Lane County, Coburg, elected officials, as well as the LTD Board will all be getting a similar update in the next few weeks. So, with that, this is the PowerPoint.
Yeah, I guess I have to say here that I'm really sorry we're doing this when we don't have the PowerPoint because this is our chance to share with the public, and I really feel badly that we aren't able to show them what we have in front of us.
Can we put that on the website?
It's on the website.
It's on the website, so we'll tell people they can go to the website and see this material.
This presentation is not on the website, but I will rectify that today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, the City Council website. I'm sorry, it's not on our project website, which is why I was just like, I don't want anybody to think it's out there. But there is a very similar presentation that actually includes narration that we used for the public workshop in July that is posted to our project website, so people will have access to all of this and more. I actually tried to call out the highlights for you so I didn't take an hour of your time. So, ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So, looking at your slides, I'm just going to walk through a couple of things. So, it's been six months since I've been to the U, so I thought I would start by reminding you what we talked about last time because I know I tend to get ahead of myself a little bit with this stuff. So, scenario planning is really about looking at plausible futures and considering what could happen if we change our course. In the Central Lane region, we're doing this because we want to look at if policies achieve our regional goals, if there are other ways we could approach the future that would help us better achieve goals, and what the changes of those -- or the outcomes of any policy changes might be. So, moving to the second slide, scenario planning is not all about greenhouse gas emission reduction. That's an important part of it, but in this region, we've decided that economic vitality, health, and equity are equally important to us, and so we're looking at those things as we move forward. We also really have a goal of maintaining flexibility for the jurisdictions in the region as we move through this process and not looking at a one-size-fits-all solution. So, reminder about where we are in the process, moving to the next page. We spent some time understanding the background, so this is what I talked to you last time. You know, what happens if we implement the reference case, which is kind of existing policy? I'll recap a little bit of what we found for you, but that was done last fall. And then, we spent some time testing and learning. So, what happens if we look at different ways of approaching the future? And I'm going to tell you about the results of that phase today. And then, the last part of our process will be to refine what we've learned into a preferred scenario and ask you to cooperatively select that, and that'll be coming later this fall and into next winter. So, remind you about your job that the legislature gave you. Your job is to cooperatively select a preferred alternative. The partners that you need to cooperatively select are shown at the bottom of your slide, and that's the Lane County Board of Commissioners, Springfield City Council, Coburg City Council, and of course, the US Eugene City Council. The legislation went on to tell you that you needed to consider at least one scenario that meets the state's greenhouse gas reduction goal. We'll talk about that in a minute. You need to consider public input, which of course comes naturally. You need to do that cooperative selection process. We need to report back to the state legislature during their next session. It doesn't include a time at which we must do that during the session, but we have until the end of the session to prepare that report. I think it's important to note that LTD is not called out as a local government per the state legislation, but our project management team feels like their inputs are really important to this process, and so the project management team will be consulting with the Board of Directors as we move through the process. Also important to note that jurisdictions are not required to implement the preferred scenario, but you are required to cooperatively select one. So, this process is really about learning, exploration, and about figuring out what you can take away to inform future planning processes rather than a bunch of policy changes that come out of this process. Moving to the state greenhouse gas reduction targets, the state did identify targets for each metro area. Yours is 20%. These all support the state in getting to a 75% reduction over 1990 greenhouse gas levels by 2050. And this is, this process looks at one piece of that, which is a 20% reduction per capita in greenhouse gas emissions in this region by 2035. And so, while the target rule is important, we have a great team of analysts who are tracking our progress at it, so I encourage you not to try to, not to get too caught up in the details of it because it does get pretty confusing pretty quickly, but know that we are, we'll tell you when we get there. We'll get a nice green light. On your next slide, I wanted to take just a minute. Matt and Carolyn, not in the green here, and I have some talking about the Climate Recovery Ordinance in City of Eugene and how that fits with the state's target because there are, of course, different base years, different ways of calculating our goals, but they are moving in the same direction. And so, key differences is that the Climate Recovery Ordinance looks at fossil fuel use from all sectors. The state's target looks at greenhouse gas reduction from just light vehicles, so cars, trucks, vans. Base year is different. The forecast year is different. So, just kind of file that away, that they're different but are moving in the same direction. And if you move to the next slide, I'll show you how they relate in terms of outcomes, which is probably what you're most interested in. We did some analysis, and this is in the realm of, you know, pretty good information. So, we know we're moving in the same direction. We suspect that Eugene's ordinance is actually a little more aggressive than the state's target, but it all depends on the assumptions you make, but we think it's a little more aggressive. We think that if you meet the state target, you'll get to about 90% of the CRO goal from that one sector. So, I think the bottom line is that the City of Eugene, to meet the Climate Recovery Ordinance goal, will need to do everything in a preferred scenario and then a little more, and nothing in this process would constrain that action. That take will make sure you'll get questions about that as you go forward. How do these two things relate? They seem the same, but they're not exactly the same. So, moving on to the reference case, I want to just remind you what we started with, and we talked about this in detail last time I was here. So, we are looking at 2035. Our 2035 assumes that Envision Eugene has been implemented along with the similar plans in Coburg and Springfield, and we've got about 64,000 more people living in the region. So, it's a future that reflects where you're headed already. If you look at this slide, which is the one that has the arrows on it, this may look familiar to you, certainly familiar to all of us who are working on this project on a day-to-day basis at this point, and that shows us that if we implement existing plans along with making the changes the state expects in our vehicle fleet and fuels, we make a huge, we make huge gains in this area of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. But we also know that to meet the target, we've got some work to do, and that's shown in the smaller arrow, the light, the green arrow. The blue arrow shows what we expect to achieve with the reference case and the, some of the assumptions the state's making about changes to technology. So, there's still work to do, but we are heading in the right direction, and I think this really signifies turning the boat around. You know, this is a big change over what we saw for the last 20 years. So, if you move to the next slide, just to recap some of the other benefits that we'll see kind of in the reference scenario, we decrease fuel consumption a whole bunch. We actually see the local gas tax revenues decrease, which correlates very closely, of course. People drive slightly less than they do today. They drive more fuel-efficient vehicles, and delay on our system increases because the reference case doesn't show a lot of improvements to the transportation system for motor vehicles, and we have population increase, so those two things kind of go together. We see vehicle operations costs decrease, biking increases significantly, and we see air quality improve. So, that tells us that we can, need to do a little bit more. So, we find out that we can invest more consistent with existing policies. We can implement new policies, and if we do that, we get benefits in the areas that we care about. We get equity benefits, we get public health benefits, we get economic benefits, and we get greenhouse gas reduction benefits. And so, our process from here forward will be asking the question, where do you want to invest more, and what does that look like, and then where do we end up if we do that? So, the next section of this presentation is really about what we've done that's completely new since I saw you last. So, we've developed two additional scenarios. Scenario B, which is enhancing existing policy, and Scenario C, which is exploring new policy. And I want to pause there and tell you that I don't think we've talked about anything that is inconsistent with your existing policies. It's about how hard it is in different areas. It's about prioritization. It's about finding more money for things that you said you want to do already. So, this doesn't require, I think we say new policy, but it doesn't require, you know, a comprehensive plan. It's basically consistent with the direction you're headed, but it's pushing harder at those things. So, I'm going to walk through the results of the analysis of these two scenarios and then talk with you about what we'd like to do next. So, on the next slide, you'll see more arrows because we seem to like those arrows that are cutting down. And on Scenario B, which is just kind of putting more money and effort towards our existing policies, very consistent with what we expect to do in the future, but really finding more money to do things, we know we can actually meet the state's target. And if we go a little farther than that, we try some new things that maybe weren't on the table before, or we look, we work a little bit harder, we're able to surpass that target. And what that tells us is we've got some flexibility about how we go about meeting the target. We don't have to do everything. We can pick some from column A, some from B, and some from C, and get there. So, that's a really important finding for us, that we have some flexibility. Moving to the next slide, comparing, we're going to just walk through some results related to public health, economy, and greenhouse gas reduction. So, in terms of public health, we found that Scenarios B and C had some really significant public health benefits. This first one talks about cost savings due to reduced disease burden, and we expect we'd actually see some real benefits here, and that's really due to the increases in active transportations of people in the region are more active, so you get some miserable benefits with reduced healthcare costs. And this is a result of using a model that has been called the ITHA model. It's an integrated model that looks at transportation and health benefits, and that's sort of kind of a nice thing to see. It equates to about $250 per household each year, and so one of, some of the conversations we've been having is what does that tell us about the economic benefit, because some would suppose that that means that that money could be spent other places. Next slide, again, about public health, that, again, that active transportation benefit helps us to reduce the premature deaths in the area. So, seems, as a planner, seems like a funny thing to talk about, but we're getting better and better about integrating public health measures into our work, and so there are some real benefits from the active transportation side. Next slide, stuff that we are very familiar with as transportation planners, transportation outcomes. We see hours of congestion decrease a bit, and we see vehicle miles traveled actually decrease as you look through Scenarios A, B, and C. These are all kind of stair-step because C is doing more than A. So, last, a couple more slides on this, biking and fuel consumption. We see biking increase quite a bit with Scenarios B and C, and we see fuel consumption decrease. And the fuel consumption decreases less because you remember that our Scenario A included a major change in our vehicle fleet already. So, our reference case assumed quite a bit of change in how efficient our cars are, so that one is actually, doesn't go down a whole bunch. Last thing I want to show you is a measure related to the economy, which is household costs. And this is very interesting. Driving costs as a percentage of household income stay relatively stable among all three scenarios, and so even though some parts of our system get more expensive, you know, you might look at charging more for parking or increasing your gas tax, the cost to drive stays relatively stable as a percentage of household income because you're giving people more choices, and people have a choice about whether to bike or walk or take transit or drive. People's cars also get more efficient, so the fuel efficiency helps out with that, too. So, that's kind of an interesting finding. So, what's working? This region continues to benefit from existing policies and a relatively compact urban form, so it makes a big difference, especially we're talking about active transportation and greenhouse gas emissions. If we divert more trips to biking and transit, and we provide new choices, we get some benefits from that. We also really can make improvements to make our road system work more efficiently, so not adding a bunch of new facilities, but improving signals, improving operations on our roadways to get, kind of get more out of what we've got left. So, what's unclear still, equity. What we're really finding with equity, it's all about implementation. It's about, about how benefits and impacts are distributed across populations of concern. So, at this level, it's really hard to make much of an assumption or explanation about equity. We also don't know yet how much we should invest in different areas. So, there are places where biking, walking, transit, pricing, that we need to talk more about with you guys and have this kind of more detailed discussion about how we want to move forward. So, the outcome of all of this work is that our project management team has identified some items that we'd like to consider including in a preferred scenario and some things that we would like to engage our community and elected officials in a more detailed discussion. So, if you move to this slide that has, shows these three boxes across the top, we've suggested that roadway optimization, so this is access management, this is that roadway optimization, so this is access management, this is signals, synchronization, and roundabouts in some cases. This is ramp metering, those sorts of things. We want to, we've assumed a pretty aggressive assumption about that in the reference case, and we think that makes perfect sense. Fleets and fuels, that again is something the state has more control over than we do, so we've assumed that that stays at kind of that state recommended level. Want to talk a little more about the next two items. So there's some things we want to recommend at this point, making a bigger investment in, and I'll talk about those in a second. And then a number of items that are really, really important locally that we want to continue to talk about over the next six months. So as I mentioned, road policy and fleet and fuel assumptions, we are recommending that the preferred scenario include a reference level of those things. So that, the fleet and fuel assumptions that the state has adopted are pretty John-aggressive, and there's some stuff we'd have to do locally probably to encourage the use of electric vehicles, that sort of thing. But seems like a good place to land for our preferred scenario. If you turn to the next one, the project management team has suggested that it makes sense, based on what we know, to invest in education and marketing programs. And so these are things like Eugene Smart Trips, car sharing in the region, workplace commuter reduction programs, that we think it makes sense to invest in, although at a pretty high level. It's consistent with the regional transportation options plan that is being developed, and makes some big differences in how much we get out of other investments we might make. So if we invest in transit and pair it with education and marketing, we get further than we would get alone. So it seems like that makes some good sense. Pay-as-you-drive insurance is another one that is a state action, really. The local governments, I don't think could implement pay-as-you-drive insurance alone, or it doesn't really make sense to do that. But the state's transportation strategy, the aspirational version, looks at almost universal adoption of pay-as-you-drive insurance. And it seems like it makes sense for this region to support that, or include that in the preferred scenario, even though it's not something you can do alone. So the next set of items are things that we want to continue discussing with you. And this is about bicycle investment. So how much investment can we make in biking? And what mode shift is realistic in each city? And so this is looking at the Eugene pedestrian and bicycle master plan, and asking the question, how far do you think you can get by 2035? Can you get further? And what else do we do around biking and walking? We want to talk more about transit investments. So how much investment can we make? What mode shift is realistic? What other programs besides enhancing capital facilities do we want to make? So this is something we'd like to talk about more. We also think it's probably worth having more conversation about how we manage parking. So asking the question is paid parking for work trips, desirable and achievable, in neighborhoods outside the U of O, downtown Eugene, and downtown Springfield. And then another separate question is, what do we want to do about paid parking for non-work trips, or for shorter-duration trips? Is it desirable above what we're doing today, or what we've shown in the reference case? And so that's another question we want your help in answering. We also need to think about how we charge people to drive, or how we pay for our systems. This is the pricing component of what we're looking at. Do we want to assume a gas tax in the future, or does this support a vehicle miles traveled tax of some sort that would move away for charging based on gas consumption and based on actual miles driven? Do we want to pursue other fees, like a carbon tax? At our last public workshop, this came up as something that folks that attended the workshop were very, very interested in. And so is that something that this region wants to suggest including in a preferred scenario? So that is what we'd like to continue talking about. If we do that, the results are shown on the next slide. And what this slide shows is it compares what we've done in the reference case, scenario A, which is business as usual, with a scenario where we've implemented the recommendations, the first two slides that I talked about, in terms of pay-as-you-drive insurance, enhance education and marketing, and the reference case for fleet and fuels and roads. You'll see that we make some progress over the reference case with that. It gets us about halfway towards the remaining part of our target. And then we would try to fill this remaining gap in here between where the tip of the arrow and the line, with the things that I just talked about, with bicycle investments, with transit investments, with managing parking, and how we pay for the system. And so if we kind of feel comfortable with that direction the PMT has taken, that's where we'd like to focus our attention, is how do we close the rest of that gap using the strategies I just described. We know there are lots of ways to get there, so a mix of strategies will get us there. We don't have to land on one particularly hard, or only one. And we know there are several paths forward. So from here, we would like to develop some refined scenarios that combine those remaining strategies in different ways, and have some discussions with you about how, what makes sense from the city of Eugene's perspective for what goes into the preferred scenario. We want to consider the high-level costs and the benefits of doing these things, so we can have a bit of a discussion about trade-offs. And then come back to you probably in January, and again in the spring, as we look to cooperatively select that preferred scenario. It might be interesting for you guys just to know that Portland is a little closer along when we are in our scenario planning process, and they just released their draft scenario for public review, their preferred scenario. Their major conclusion is really something very similar to what we're finding, is that their policies are pretty darn good, they get them a lot of the way towards what they want to do, and the real barrier is funding. And so I think one of their key messages will be, we can do this, but we're going to need to find ways to pay for the new transit service, to find ways to pay for biking and walking facilities, and programs that support active transportation if we want to get there. And we're going to need the state's support in making changes on the technology side. So we may find similar things, but their work is all up on the website, and I'm sure Carolyn can share any of that with you, that you're interested in seeing, get a preview of maybe where we're headed. So the last slide is just the recap of the schedule. So there you go. If you can answer any questions.
Thank you for that. I wanted to say that for the public, and for any of us who have forgotten, that Portland is different than us in that they have to implement. That's a requirement. So they are sort of the test case for this, and on a faster timeline than we are, and with different requirements than we have. And then I also wanted to bring up the, I didn't see it here, I'm sure it's implied, but the connectivity issue has a lot to do with how all the different modes work, and how they work together, and what we accomplish by, how those are woven together to achieve the goals. And I didn't necessarily see that called out, but I think it's a really important part of this. No matter where you are, or how good your system is, if one part of it doesn't link up to the other, you're losing the possibilities that you have. And the other thing I wanted to call out is the disconnect sometimes between what we say we're doing, they want us to do in one part, and then another part not really understanding that. I don't know, I'm just saying the Oregon Transportation Commission, in some ways, has been going through a little pushback on some of the modes in terms of funding. And then we're going to have to find a way to put all these pieces together to really, for us to move and for others to move, we're going to have to make sure that all the parts are heading in the same direction. So in the case of this last go-round, I think we identified what we wanted to have funded, and it went through the Connect Oregon, and they did very well, but just out there in left field, somebody said, well, we really don't want to do as much bike stuff, so now we're not going to, we're not going to fund those. And you have to have all these things being supported in order to move the dial. My thoughts on this, Chris.
Thank you. Wow, incredible amount of work. I think scenario planning is, just, it's an amazing exercise to do because there's so many different variables. Couple of questions. The first one is, I mentioned, you mentioned in here the projection of 64,000 new people. I'm guessing the scenarios are accommodating that 64,000 people. In other words, your assumptions and the outcomes that you're talking about are with the expectation that those 64,000 people and their habits and their cars and everything else are in this? Okay. The second element is, I guess it's a question, as you develop your scenarios, the degree to which you had kind of empirical elements, you know, maybe an example in another city, or some of these things having actually played out in reality, versus kind of if we do A, it'll lead to B, and how did you decide it would lead to B? I'm always stymied by human nature, and how much of an enormous variable human nature is. If I do A, will they do B? Or do I, will they do B because I can observe that, or will they do B because I believe they'll do that? In my life as a market researcher, I was constantly being surprised by asking people if they would do A, and discovering they would actually do B. And so in this scenario, the degree to which you've accommodated observable human nature, you know, will people, if you do this in transportation, will they walk more? I mean, a lot of your, for example, in the medical area, you're increasing the number of miles and times that people walk as a health factor, which is great. Will they indeed do that? Do you have an example that you can look at from another city, or some other empirical information that says that will indeed happen? Because that's very exciting to me. I'd love to save millions of dollars if people will indeed transfer over to walking, or it could be something else. When I was originally involved in Transplan, I was on the Transportation Demand Management Committee, which was kind of the most exciting of all the three, because that was the carrot and stick committee, and figuring out what appropriate use of carrots and sticks was really going to get you to the outcome that you wanted, knowing what human nature was going to be. So I guess that's the long way around for saying, how have you factored realistic human nature into what you project people will do under each one of these three scenarios?
I'm going to make our modelers very nervous, but I'm going to tell you that this is all based on both the ITHM model and the GreenStep model that we've used for these are peer-reviewed, they're the best available, and they are based on exactly what you're talking about, looking at case studies. So what kind of investment in biking, what does that lead to? So looking at case studies, looking at those kinds of demand management relationships. And so they are the best we have to work with, and are nationally respected. And in another part of my job, I'm working with the Federal Highway Administration on taking this model and launching it nationally. So it is, it's really good stuff. It's not perfect.
Yeah, I would never ask somebody to bet money on the future, but you try to get as close as you can. So I'm, it's not critical as much as it is, I'm interested in what kind of systems you use, but it looks really good. I'm impressed with the work.
Great.
Thanks, Mayor. Having wrestled with this for a few years, I just kind of want to go back to your page 14 in your top slide there. One of the things that I think is critical for us to look at is, you know, again, how do we pay for this? In an environment where you have a diminishing source of revenue, which is cash tax, I think that the big thing that we need to look at is in terms of paradigm shift, not just in behavior, in consumer behavior, but paradigm shift in where we are going to be able to generate the revenue to support this. And, you know, the state's experiments with VMT pricing, you know, I think need to take the next step. We also need to do that with assessing, you know, carbon emissions to do, you know, to be able to finance that infrastructure. But, you know, we also have some difficult problems in terms of the federal investment in transportation infrastructure being kind of slowed down in the last eight years or so, with not having, with us not having a full-blown transportation bill for several years now, I think is going to hinder us in the future. And the other thing that I think is really important is for people to understand that, you know, the scenario plan is taking its, you know, leaps and bounds in the tri-county area, because there is a little bit of money behind that from the legislature, and it's not, we don't have those same resources here at this point. And so we're going to have to look at different ways of funding transit operations. At some point, there's going to be a point of saturation, if you will, I think, with us looking at the payroll taxes being the primary source of funding transit operations. And then I think that we also really need to be, you know, aware of how we support our infrastructure investment vis-à-vis roads and bridges. And again, going back to identifying those newer sources of revenue to be able to bolster that, because as we add more and more people, costs are going to continue to go up, and our ability to actually keep pace with what the need is, is steadily declining. So I'm concerned about those issues, and hopefully we can look at those new revenue sources as some way to be able to get ahead of the curve a little bit.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to touch on a little bit more of what Chris brought up. I think for me, the part of this that's very interesting is that we start with a state, I'm assuming a legislative assumption that GHG reductions are best done by addressing transportation goals as opposed to other methods. That's an interesting assumption to begin with. But I'd like to see this sort of planning encompass a better sense of communication with the general public about trade-offs and choices. It's one thing for us to set goals and say, well, yes, these are marvelous, and we'd like to take the most challenging ones, and we think that, we at this table, we at other tables of elected folks, think these would be good goals for us to set and try and accomplish, without actually asking members of the general public, okay, we know that greenhouse gas emission reductions are important to you, but are they important enough to create a carbon tax that you're going to pay now? Are they important enough to you to make parking when you go to work twice as expensive? Is it important enough to you to wait an hour on the Belt Line? I mean, we're not asking the kind of real-world inconvenience questions that are going to be the result of these goals to the public to really get a better sense of, where is their level of real comfort with those sort of goals? They're good ones. But I'm trying to figure out a better process in my head for how you minimize those sort of pushbacks when they occur, and if that's possible in this scenario planning. So I don't know that I have a question, I just thought I'd make that comment.
Well, and I think it's worth mentioning that we will be doing a scientific telephone poll in the fall, and so those kinds of questions are things that we can talk about how to incorporate in that scientific poll, as well as in our other public outreach.
What level of discomfort, what increase in financial burden are you willing to bear to accomplish those goals on a personal, day-to-day level? I mean, because, I mean, we've talked about this before, too, with the issues around the Belt Line rebuild between Coburg and River Road. So got a failing facility, and if after spending a couple hundred million dollars, we may get it just this side of not being a failing facility, but we may have to change the standards of what's an acceptable way in the process to do it. I mean, but where is the real, where does the rubber hit the road? Where's the real-world scenario that the average person feels in their day-to-day life, and their impact? Thank you.
George Brown?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I'm looking at attachment C in our AIS, in the first page, under pricing and policy category. And I see pay-as-you-drive insurance, and I don't know exactly what that is. Could you explain what that means?
Yeah, pay-as-you-drive insurance is a model for insurance that rather than paying a fixed, or an annual, or every-six-month fee that captures any amount you drive, instead, your insurance company would charge you on a per-mile basis for your insurance for most users. And so it's available in some places now, but this would look at a broader adoption of that.
Where it's available in the state?
It's available, I believe so.
And some companies? Do you know which companies offer that? Okay. Well, that might be nice to know, you know, at some point in the near future. And then I guess, just kind of a parallel question, is the vehicle miles travel tax, how would that be, what's the thinking on how that would be implemented?
So that one I know a bit more about, but I think the important thing is, so the state, you guys probably mostly know that the state is examining a vehicle miles travel tax, and has done a pilot, and is getting ready to do tax, and has done a pilot, and is getting ready to do an expanded voluntary program, looking at how you could charge highly-fuel-efficient vehicles differently for their use of the roadway system. And I think here, we don't want to get bogged down in the details of what the state's testing, and what they're finding from that. But instead, what we'd want to do is ask the question, is it desirable? And if it is desirable, then as a region, we'd want to support the state's efforts in moving away from a gas tax for summer or all vehicles.
I see. That pilot project, have the results been, when summer investigation published?
There are, yeah, there are results from the initial pilot available on the state's website, and we can send you a link to that.
That'd be nice.
And then the state is just starting their process to look at the expanded pilot that was approved by the last legislature.
Well, good, yeah, that'd be nice. I'd like to see that. That's all, thank you.
Claire.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, very, very interesting. To Counselor Clark's comment about the assumptions around light vehicles, is it not true that light vehicle emissions contribute the largest share of CO2 emissions? Is that correct or incorrect?
Yes.
I don't think it's the largest.
No.
Anyway, but the state is looking at a 75% reduction over 1990 levels from all sectors. And so this goal fits into the state's overall strategy for this broader look at GHG reductions throughout everything we do. So this is, they've carved out one niche for us to talk about here, but it's in the context of a much broader conversation.
Okay. I think it's always valuable, when we're having conversations around these issues, that we understand where those assumptions came from, so that we're all kind of operating from at least the same understanding, even if we don't necessarily agree on the particular strategies. So I, but I'm very glad that our local climate ordinance sets a higher standard for us. And I think the other distinction that we might want to add to that slide is that it's actually an ordinance that we're required to take action on, as opposed to a plan that we can make and look at, and say, oh, that's nice, and move on. So I would love to see that added to that slide on page four of our packet. And then I was wondering, you referenced equity as a value in this work, but you didn't really speak to how it was being framed, or how it was being thought about. Could you speak to that for just a moment?
Yeah, there are kind of two pieces of equity. One is around outreach, and who we engage in the conversation about this work, so that everyone in the community has access to providing public input. And so what we'll be doing in the next few months is going out and meeting with groups, equity groups, or service providers, those sorts of folks, to check in on our scenarios, and say, do you have concerns about what we're doing, or does it seem like it works for the folks you serve, or the, in some cases, the work for you as a member of an equity community? So that's part of this. The other part is about the kind of empirical analysis, and we're finding that to be very difficult at this policy level. So other than looking at income, where I showed you the percentage of household income that's cost to drive, we can look at that across different income quintiles, and see if we're disproportionately affecting folks that have lower incomes. But that's, other than that, it's pretty hard to do, because we are at this very, very high policy level. And so one of the things we'll need to do is, as we write a report and think about implementation actions, is to really give more detailed thought to the equity implications of how we implement this stuff, and make sure that is reflected in our final report. So those are the ways we're dealing with it.
Yeah, thanks. And I can appreciate that challenge. You know, I just think as we think about, you know, so I work for an organization that advocates for improved bike path infrastructure and active transportation related to health impacts and improving community health. And so I think as we look at how we move this forward, for me, this piece of equity, and seeing that we're implementing these types of activities in our community with equity in mind, and that we're not excluding certain parts of the community because they're more difficult to reach, or infrastructure may have been set out in such a way that now trying to accommodate them seems disproportionately expensive to building a bike path in another part of the community, and also to really be aware of our own biases about who we might think and assume is going to use a bike path, and who won't. I think those are all important things for us to be thinking about as we go forward with these conversations. Thanks very much.
So in thinking about the phone questions that you were talking about earlier, I don't know how you do it, and I, but I think it's important that if you're going to ask people a question, that you ask them, not only are they willing or not willing to consider these options, but there's a thing here about, if you do this, you will gain this much, and maybe lose this much, and maybe it'll even itself out in terms of the impact on you because of the gain in one place and the loss in the other. But it has to be, it seems to me it has to be looked at in a whole way, because when I look at this, and you talk about the health benefits, and people having $250 more dollars in their, to spend because of some of these changes, and then somewhere else they might lose that $250 in terms of some impact. And so if you knew that you could make all these changes, and keep relatively the same, would you be wanting to do that? That's more about the will as opposed to the worry, I think. Chris.
Yeah, just to build on that, that's interest versus commitment. Would you, would you like a million dollars? Yeah. Would you trade your left arm for it? Well, that's a trade-off. So yeah, your survey needs to look at the trade-offs. What are they willing to do for what they think they're going to receive or lose as a result? You know that, I mean, that's how that works. The other element that I was interested in is there's, when you're talking about emission standards, and increasing air quality and all that, versus revenue, sometimes the mechanisms you use, if it's a revenue-oriented mechanism, then you might look at vehicle miles traveled, or some sort of a road tax, you know? What's my odometer in January, what's my odometer in December, and what's the difference? And I raise money with that, versus the notion of, how can I reduce emissions? I grew up in the state of New York, where every year you had to take your car in and had it certified for emissions. And if it didn't pass inspection, you couldn't drive the car. And I'm wondering, the degree to which the state has explored the idea of certifying vehicles? I mean, you could have an enormous impact on emissions, actual pollution, if you got polluting cars off the road. And so I realize that's not a giant money generator, but it actually is a way to have a direct and significant impact on emission standards. Kind of an in-between measure, which I discovered in Japan, I thought that was really interesting, is the vehicle registration fees increase as the car's age gets older. And so if the car's 10 years old, you pay a lot more to register that car than if a car's only five years old. And I realize it's somewhat arbitrary, but it does have a generalized effect of getting older, more, less fuel-efficient cars off the road. It also helps the auto industry enormously as well. But that's where you can begin to look at how you can take emissions and revenue, and figure out some creative ways to put those two together. So as the state looks at this, you know, you don't want to go with just an off-the-shelf simple solution, there may be some additional things that can accomplish more than one goal at the same time.
Great.
Yeah, I'm going to go back to Counselor Soret's argument about equity, and, you know, kind of drilling down from that 30,000-foot level. What we really have right now is a situation in this community in particular, where we have significant transit investments in capital, but we don't have the operating and maintenance component in place to be able to get that service out to the people who need it. So four years ago, we cut service, bus service in this community, because we did not have the revenue capabilities to meet the service needs out there. And so as we continue, I just want us to note that as we continue talking about transportation investments, it's kind of that catch-22 situation, where yes, you can invest in a bus rapid transit system, you can get new vehicles, you can do all of that, but if you don't have the ability or the resources to be able to put out the service palette that is necessary to get those resources to people who need them, then it becomes a self-defeating prophecy. And so I think that we need to have a little bit more attention, that is focused on the O and M side of things, while we are still making those significant investments in transportation infrastructure, be it vehicles, or the system itself, or whatever we're doing in building bus rapid transit lines.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And with that, I think we're through with the business of the day.